...meeting of September fourteenth, two thousand and six. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Wesley?
Here.
Alderman Winger?
Here.
Alderman Talmey?
Here.
Alderman Subak?
Here.
Alderman Shaki?
Here.
Alderman Pizik? Alderman Coles?
Yeah.
Alderman Kinnate?
Here.
I declare court in present. Next item, approval of minutes, August tenth, two thousand and six. I make that motion. And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, it's a verbal report on, and it's for information only, an audit update from our interim finance director, Ms. Powers.
Thank you Chairman Winger. I talked with the auditors today. We've submitted the last of the information they needed for our report, and they tell me that they hope to have a draft copy to me by next Wednesday. Me, Tesh, and I will need to review it. There's some information we'll take from the report to put in our letter of transmittal and the management discussion and analysis, and then we'll get it back to them. They'll produce the report. They'll give us a management letter, and they'll come here and present that to you and discuss in full the audit. So, we're on schedule. Our filings are all due by October thirty first, so this is good news to have it by next week, and we're happy it's finished.
Great. Okay, so we'll be on time. We're on track. That's very good news. Any input? For information only, next item is a report and for information only, the financial software update. Ms. Powers?
Thank you. As you know, during the budget process, we discussed acquiring new financial software during this fiscal year. I still believe that's possible, but the process needs to take place with several steps. I have prepared a draft copy of a request for proposal, and I've asked Alderman Talmey to look at it because of his background in systems, to see if he thinks it's comprehensive enough to send out. We've identified five or six vendors that we'll be asking for proposal submission, and I expect that to go out by the end of the month. And then I believe we'll have to give these vendors probably twenty-one to thirty days to respond to us, and I also want to provide them with a tentative timeline. I think the way this will probably work is, the first modules, and that would probably be our cash receipts and utility billing modules, we would aim to get started in January of two thousand and seven. And then if those were successfully run, because we would need to run parallel with our old system for utility billing, at least for one month, then we would add on accounts payable, accounts receivable, building permits, vehicle stickers, business licenses, all those other modules. But we're looking for a comprehensive package that would, will certainly be a Windows application. It will allow us to have full integration between various modules, certainly a report writer. Those things sounded like wish lists fifteen or twenty years ago. Now they're standard. So that's the kind of things that I've incorporated in the RFP. And I think we'll be able to get it out in the mail and probably have results sometime by the end of October, first part of November, for your approval.
Great. Thank you. Dead item is for information only. Next item is item number six, report for information only on banking procedures update. And if we all recall, we had just recently chosen our primary banking, and what this does is it does recognize, I task a bank as our primary bank, but it also shows a nice, it recognizes a nice mix of other banks nearby and different disbursements. So with that, I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Powers, and she'll take us more in detail.
Thank you Chairman Winger. Yes, the handout I gave you this evening is really just for your information. It gives a proposed breakdown of, I'm calling it investments, but it's actually all of the monies that the city has that should be interest-bearing. Right now, all of the money the city has is in interest-bearing accounts, but you're probably all familiar with the fact that right now, the yield curve, which is usually short-term rates are lower, long-term rates are higher, has been inverted for some time. So actually, there are better opportunities for earnings in the short-term market, in the one-year market, as opposed to three years or five years. So, part of that proposal is taking advantage of this higher yield in the short-term market, but positioning the city so that if rates change and that yield curve should revert back, we would be able to take advantage of that. Right now, rates are running anywhere from about five point one percent to five point two-five percent, and our interest income will be healthy this year, healthier than it's been in quite a while. In fact, I think more than I've budgeted for, so that's good news. But secondly, I wanted to just bring you up to date with the fact that I have met with I task a bank representatives, and they are in the process of creating the documents to set up the accounts, all the accounts that we need. We have discussed briefly the credit card applications, which would be something new for the city, but we're also investigating various e-pay alternatives. An e-pay is simply where any kind of a bill, a utility bill, a building permit fee, anything like that, can be paid by an individual on the Internet. And there are companies out there that will provide this service to you for a flat monthly rate. There are other companies that charge the individual who makes the payment a transaction charge. There are companies like Third Millennium that do our water billing and vehicle stickers now, who have their own application to collect monies on those two things. And then obviously, there are the regular arrangements with companies with merchant banks to accept Visa or MasterCard, whatever credit cards we wanted to do. What we're trying to do is come up with the simplest and most cost-effective way to do this, so that as many people as possible can participate. So, as part of the financial accounting software, I am certainly mentioning that the city will be utilizing some kind of credit debit card, some kind of an electronic payment system, and the software would have to be able to encompass that, or at least allow us to import files from a bank, so we could post those receipts. But at this point, it's a little too soon. We're going to have to speak with some of these other vendors and see how that will go, and of course, I task a bank will work with us in any way that we want. So, that's good news. But I wanted you to see the rest of the piece of how the city's monies could be invested and still be available to pay bills and be available for unanticipated expenditures as well.
Item is for information only. Next item on the agenda is items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, payroll outsourcing targeted for October twelfth, two thousand and six. Item B is updated report on water billing and usage discrepancies targeted for October twelfth, two thousand and six. Are there any new items to add for future meetings? Then I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Ed Cole, meeting, planning, zoning, and building committee to order. I'll let the minutes reflect, same members are present. Next item is approval of minutes of August tenth, two thousand and six. Make that a form of motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item is a report and recommendation, case number zero-six-T-A Tango Alpha Seven. City of Wood Dale text amendment requests for proposed increase fees charged for purposes of an application for zoning change or variation, and an increase to fees charged for subdivision, creating a fee schedule for applications for lot consolidation or planned unit development. Cities requesting a change for one text amendment to chapter ten of the zoning code to increase fees charged by the city for the purpose of an application for zoning change or variation to the zoning code, and a text amendment to chapter eleven to increase the fee charged for purposes of an application for subdivision, lot consolidation, and planned unit development. Along with, in your packet, you received the, some of the questions that were posed by the ZBA at their July seventeenth meeting, and you've seen the answers from staff. Any questions on any of the items or so? Alderman Subak?
I just had a question on the fee for the PUD. Typically, what we see that comes in now is done under a PUD just because of the limited amount of space that's left, and always the changes that petitioners are requesting. We're having a flat fee of three thousand for a PUD, but that PUD could contain, if it's a condo project, could contain one hundred and twenty units. Shouldn't we be more looking to base it on the number of units that come out of it, of the PUD, as opposed to just a flat fee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, that is a possibility, where we could be charging them not only on the individual basis for the units being or proposed to be constructed, but we could also have a calculation in there with respect to the retail or commercial space, too. It's all a method of philosophy, and certainly, these changes can be, you know, can be considered and certainly approved at council level. One of the items that we've talked to other cities and municipalities about is the fact of what their ranges are, and some of them are in excess of six thousand dollars for PUDs. And that's sometimes predicated on the size of the development, per acre, or for the total impact it may have on the community. And some of these calculations are based with respect to not only the impact it's going to have on the community, also, too, on the infrastructure. So, that particular figure was just one, I believe, that was brought forward when the Finance Administration Committee discussed and unanimously approved this back on February ninth of two thousand and six. I believe that that was some portion of the discussion, and certainly, that figure can be changed in whatever manner is decided.
And that's my only, because if you look at the subdivision application, we're talking about a five hundred dollar per lot fee. So if it's a ten-lot subdivision, which could be ten single-family homes, they're going to pay ten thousand dollars for the fee, I'm sorry, five thousand dollars. If it's a PUD and it has one hundred and eighty units in the PUD, because it's a townhouse project similar to one maybe that Pulte did, they're only paying three thousand, and they're getting one hundred and eighty units. So, I think there should be a certain flat fee for the initial PUD. It should be like a two-tiered. It should be whatever, three thousand dollars plus so much per unit, because the more units that are involved, the more work that becomes involved. Now we start worrying about fire department, how many floors up is it, so on and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just did a quick calculation with respect to a case in point here with the Gagliano, the Wooddale Station project. At one hundred and twenty-one units, their fee, if we were to charge, let's say, like five hundred dollars per unit, would be sixty thousand five hundred dollars, which is probably a bit prohibitive. But certainly, staff can work on between now and next meeting with some variations, too, what you had suggested with respect to a sliding scale or a...
I don't know what the number should be, and we can figure, it just, it seems like it should be somewhere closer. If I build a one hundred and twenty kind of minimum units, it should be somewhat more in line with building, maybe not one hundred and twenty houses, but maybe more in line with, you know, a twenty-house subdivision or something like that. So, maybe between now and next week, we can come up with some other numbers, just for the PUD.
Alderman Talmey?
Just real quick, I just, I just, first I did a hundred dollars, and I did two hundred dollars. One hundred and twenty-one units, two hundred dollars, if I did this right, it's twenty-four thousand two hundred dollars. I don't think that's prohibited. Or even if you want to look at two fifty per unit. I mean, five hundred, I agree. Sixty thousand becomes a little bit, you know, outrageous, but even if we went to two fifty, you know, just kind of as a, because I do agree with Alderman Subak.
Could we...
Can a minute, taker, make sure you get that last sentence down that he agreed with me? Thank you.
Consider, on a numbers unit, two fifty for fifty units, more or less, one fifty for over fifty units plus, something in that order? Alderman Shaki?
I also agree, but I'm...
That has to be in the minutes.
Sure. I'm also wondering why we need to reduce it. If there's more units in a PUD, it should be a certain amount, and that's what it should be. But the question I have is about the standard variation application. As I understand it, some standard variations that come in are changed as they go along, and some have taken a lot more staff time than others. As a matter of fact, we have one that I understand took over a thousand dollars' worth of staff time, and they're only being charged the same as everybody else at this point, at least four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Is there any, anything in place that when the application, where the person who's submitting the application makes changes, that takes more staff time? Is there an additional charge for that? Are we, or are they still getting everything for four hundred and fifty-five dollars, even though they've made changes, which is making more staff time?
Snod?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Alderman Shaki, you're quite correct. There are certain instances where the amount becomes excessive with respect to the four hundred and fifty-five dollar charge. In certain instances, as you are well aware, a few years back, staff instituted a thousand-dollar minimum escrow fee for people requesting these complicated types of zoning board of appeals, plan commission requests, whereby the thousand dollars is escrowed after the first meeting, which is always free. Then, from that particular figure, the various fees or time involved is deducted from that amount, that thousand-dollar amount. And then at certain, in certain instances, if there are more complications, such as engineering re-reviews or a change, then those particular individuals are billed directly for the charges we incur from the city engineer.
Now, the question I'm asking, though, is how about just the standard? There was, I understand, there was one that came in just a normal variation, but then had a number of changes. And I don't think they were charged that thousand-dollar upfront fee.
In that instance, we don't have a mechanism to do that, and that's another reason why, just to give you an example, we're looking for these specific fee increases, because what it will do was it will generate revenue into the general fund to act as sort of an absorption or a cushion for those instances when those particular individual cases go over, so that we're hopefully running at a positive benefit at the end of the fiscal year.
The difficulty there is that we're asking everybody who comes in for variance to be paying for somebody who's going to go way beyond, because they're changing it and making it difficult as they go along. I think that there should be something in there that you can come up with, where if they make changes that are going to cost us more in staff time, that additional charges be added on to it, rather than... I mean, some of these things are kind of silly when they're changes that are made. They're obviously against code, and then staff has to take up time to tell them and have them change it and everything else, yet they're still getting the same price break as everybody else. I don't think it's fair for everybody else to have to pay for these people.
Well, I agree. That's a reasonable projection there, because, as you just mentioned, this is a user fee situation, and if, especially if you are making changes that are only complicating it, someone should pay, and certainly not the general tax-paying public.
Right.
But that could be easy enough. We can base it on a similar formula that we do with the development escrow. That would not be a problem at all.
In other words, if it's our doing, that's making the staff time more, we wouldn't charge them, but if it's their doing, and they're making the staff time more because they're making changes that really should have been considered in the first place, then we should be adding on that staff time. So, if you can look at that and let us know, and a way to do that as well, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly. We can base it, as I said, on the formula that we use with respect to the development escrows. Just use it on a straight hour-per-hour basis. And what we do is, we have a minimum staff charge of two hours, so that if someone comes in, they do have two hours of our time, and if they don't utilize all two hours, then that's fine, then the city's on the plus side.
Because I think some of these people should be prepared upfront and know what the ordinances are saying, or especially their lawyers should know, rather than taking up our time and having us having to tell them to change it, and then it's costing us more as well.
You're quite correct.
Thank you.
Under the standard variance application, it was talked about that we, it is not a statute that we have to have a court reporter to take the minutes or a city attorney present. In that case, if we're going to eliminate the court reporter, because we do tape the meetings, so there is a recorded record of it, I don't see why we want or have to increase that fee by a hundred dollars if we're actually eliminating some of the cost. So, as far as the standard variance, I would want to keep that as is, as our current fee.
Well, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, that's another reason why staff included this information-only memorandum, to give you the benefit of knowing that these items can be eliminated at a cost savings, so that we don't increase these fees beyond what would be a reasonable point. In surveying surrounding communities, most of the surrounding communities for the type of situations that are depicted here are within the same range of prices. Maybe fifty dollars less, maybe fifty dollars more. They're all in around a five hundred dollar range. So, if what you had suggested we do, you can certainly keep it at the four hundred and fifty-five dollars, at least until possibly costs for some other reason would go up. But it's an easy enough change to make.
Alderman Subak?
When was the last time these fees, at least for the standard variance, have been changed?
It's been about, it's been about four years. They were three hundred and fifty-five dollars, and then there was an instance where we had received an increase on the public notices, the publication of the public notices a few years back, approximately four, where that particular charge went up forty to forty-two percent. And that's when it started to impact these fees in such a way that we weren't collecting enough to cover our costs, and that's when it was raised to the four hundred and fifty-five dollar level, so approximately four years ago.
I mean, so, I mean, a lot of this cost is, its publication cost is how much per, on average?
Publication costs are all basically the same with respect to the different types of newspapers. They're all within a few dollars of each other, but it's based on a line, an inch per line, and it's a definite amount that typically runs, again, depending upon the length of the legal description. You could have a brief, two-sentence legal description. You will have the, the public notice cost less than a hundred dollars. But you'll have one, one that I can remember, that Gullough International had, that was almost seven hundred dollars because of the length of the legal description.
My other concern on the fee is just the subdivision application. I don't know, I probably even suggested a five hundred dollar per lot. I want to make sure that's adequate, because what's left here in Wooddale is really, as far as space, is only a homeowner who maybe lives on Sunset Drive and all of a sudden figures out, boy, I have a subdivisible lot here, and I may have not realized it, so I'm going to go ahead and subdivide it. Whether or not that fee is five hundred dollars, seven fifty, or a thousand, none of those figures are going to stop them from subdividing that lot, and they'll go ahead and get subdivided. So, you know, I think five hundred should be a minimum, because any subdivision that's coming now is all a moneymaker, I think, in this case.
I agree.
Alderman Talmey?
Yeah. First off, there's two things. First off, I just want to go back and address something that you had said, Mr. Kinnate, as far as, for the planned unit development, going with a tiered structure. And I kind of just, again, I just ran numbers, okay, real quick, and I said, okay, if you take fifty units at two hundred and fifty dollars, that's roughly twelve thousand five hundred dollars. If we take, as an example, the Gagliano property, the one hundred and twenty-one units, and then you charge two hundred for everything above, okay, roughly, that comes out to fourteen thousand two hundred. So, I mean, it's, in total, if you combine them, because I would go, the first fifty, you charge two fifty, anything over that, you charge at the two hundred rate, you come up to twenty-six thousand seven hundred dollars, which basically is what, two thousand five hundred dollars more than if you set a two hundred dollar standard fee for everything. So, I mean, it does give you some flexibility, but I don't know if it's worth the two thousand dollars to screw around with tiered pricing, or if we just go with the flat, two hundred dollars, you know, per unit, and just keep it at that. Doesn't matter whether it's one, or whether, you know, or if it's, you know, one hundred and twenty-one. Just throw that out to the rest. And then as far as getting back to what was brought up, well, first, let's get that resolved. Let's see if we can get this resolved first, because we're kind of jumping around here, so...
I'm fine with two hundred dollars per unit, but we're talking with two hundred dollars per residential unit or commercial unit, not if they have a townhouse that it's not two hundred dollars per, you know, plat or per lot. It's two hundred dollars per unit. So if it's a PUD...
Per condominium unit and/or...
Per condominium or townhouse unit or residential, whatever the PUD is made up of, it's two hundred dollars per unit.
Right. It's, I would say, you still have the same, what Roger had originally submitted was the three thousand dollars. That's your flat fee. Then on top of that, that's when now you have, you add the two hundred dollars per unit. That's what I would recommend. So, in the case of Gagliano and one hundred and twenty-one units, it would have cost them three thousand dollars for the initial planned unit development, and then it would have cost them another twenty-four thousand. So in total, it would have been twenty-four thousand, or twenty-seven thousand two hundred dollars, is what the city would have got. That would, should cover our costs. If it doesn't cover our costs, we have a bigger issue, I think.
I think that would more than cover our costs.
So, if everybody's in agreement with that, I'd make that recommendation.
Any opposition to that? No? Okay.
Then if I could address my second point. The standard variation application, I want to go back on something that, again, the community development director had brought up, and that is, with the packet, there was the information-only document, and I think this is something that really probably shouldn't have been and put in as information-only. It's something that probably should have been put in as this open for discussion, because I think this is a discussion we should have, and I don't know if tonight's the time to do it, or a future date, but I think this is, it's important that we do discuss what we were given here, because if, if I've read this correctly, and according to this, that there is no statutory requirement for either the city attorney to be there or the public, you know, or court reporter, why are we having them present at these hearings if they're, you know, if they're not real complex hearings? I mean, that's a fee that the city is absorbing, and I, I mean, I'd like the recommendation that we should at least look at eliminating that in those instances, and try and plan those ZBA meetings then, where we would know, if we need the attorney there, we have the attorney. We need the court reporter, we have the court reporter. But if we don't, then we don't have them.
The need for the court reporter was prior to our televising the meetings.
Right.
So, you had to have an official document or whatever. That was mandated. Now, I don't know if we need the attorney's opinion on this, that our televising the meetings is adequate, and that would eliminate the need for that court reporter. If that fact is it, then, yeah, we can eliminate that, and that eliminates a lot of cost. But that's the reason why we had it. That was standard procedure, because it had to be recorded somehow, somewhere legally. Mr. Snod?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the court reporter, this, again, is, we have researched this extensively via conversation as well as the Internet, and there is no, again, statutory requirement for that. And nowadays, the cities that do not require the court reporter have their sessions videotaped or put over cable television, and/or what they do is have a, just a standard minute taker taking the notes, and it has been proved to be sufficient enough in that instance to do so. But now, because of the fact that we televise them and everything is recorded, it's even better, because we have the visual as well as the audio. So that's something that is an improvement. One other thing I'd like to mention in that regard is that currently... One other thing I'd like to, to mention in that regard is that currently, chapter ten or zoning code does have that in as a requirement. So if we are, if it is the wish of the council to remove that specific instance of the court reporter from the requirements, we would need to do a text amendment to remove that from the, from the zoning code.
Alderman Wesley?
Since we're going to discuss this tonight, I have a couple of questions. On a legal notice to, to not have the attorney present here, when they have a hearing here, doesn't the party pays for our attorney to be here? Am I correct or am I wrong?
For, for the, let's say, an annexation or so?
For a side yard variance and that, those, don't they pay for the attorney to be here?
No, sir.
Okay, but my question then is why does some of these that are asking for side yard variance calling our attorney and we are getting a bill from our attorney to help them with side yard variance? Tell me that one then.
I don't know how that is involved in some instances, but there are times when attorneys call attorneys without the knowledge of, of other individuals like staff or the city manager and then we don't find out about it until later. And this has to do with, with them wanting to either discuss the topic of, in question or maybe some other matter associated with it. I really can't, I really can't explain it.
The question I have is we are still, when these topics come up, we are still paying that attorney for his advice because if that attorney called our attorney, our attorney's billing us regardless.
You're absolutely right.
So, I mean, there's two standards here. Are we going to have the attorney here or we tell our attorney that he can't accept any phone calls for other attorneys about variance or anything else? Because I don't think we should be paying for that.
I agree, we should not and neither should the general taxpaying public bear the burden. It doesn't, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense, but it's not a perfect world and sometimes those situations do happen. But certainly in, in instances where we have either complex issues, zoning issues or so, annexations as such, then certainly we would need the city attorney and their expertise in order to make sure that every, everything is done appropriately and properly. And as was mentioned in the memo, this is, this is, these are the specific areas, but...
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. I don't necessarily want to tie our, our fee structure to the possibility of not using the attorney or the court reporter at these meetings because there's, it's still open for discussion and also that if, like, I still feel it should be the chairman's discretion. Should we decide that attorney might not be needed for some cases? I still feel that if the chairman feels they need that attorney there for, for that hearing, that they still would have the right to have the attorney with them at the zoning board meeting. So I, I would want to be covered if the attorney did need to show up that night with our fee structure.
Alderman Zubak?
The other thing we have to make sure is that this should not be part of the text, we should make it part of the appendix. Is that how you want the fee structures, Roger, in the future so that if we want to change these fees once we pass them tonight or in the future, that we don't have to go through a public hearing to change these each time, correct?
Absolutely correct, Alderman Zubak. Just as with what staff brought up and city council considered and approved was the fact that when we changed the building codes, we did that. We put them in an appendix in, within the city code so that every time there was supposed to be a change, no matter how minor it would be, we would not have to go through the entire process, which is at times quite cost consuming.
I, I agree, we don't need the city attorney present at the zoning meetings unless staff feels it's a requirement. But to tie the attorney's hand saying that typically an attorney for a petition is not going to call our corporate attorney, they're going to call Roger and find out, you know, why are you not giving a staff recommendation or I have some questions about, or when am I on the agenda? Most of those calls go to Roger. I think that our attorney is, gets calls from residents sometimes when they come in on a petition for zoning change and if you're going to put a call through that says, Pat, don't take their calls, when, you know, Mrs. Smith calls from Wooddale because she has a side yard variation coming up on the agenda and she has a question, wait for the public outcry when you hear that our attorney hangs up on everybody and says, I can't talk to you at the direction of the city council. It's just one of those inherent costs you have. That's why we charge a fee of five hundred and fifty-five dollars to eat up some of those costs.
Want to tell me?
I, I would concur with that. Again, my, my thing is leaving it up to the discretion of, of, really of the community development director. If he feels that the city attorney is needed at those building zoning meetings, then it would be his discretion to have them at those meetings. If he doesn't feel that it's, it's imperative that they be at a specific meeting, why should we, as a, as a city, pay for an attorney to sit there for, for a couple of hours when they, they may not be needed? So I think it's, it's, it should be left up to their or Rogers or whoever the community development director is at the time, okay? Up to their discretion. As far as the fees that we're looking at here, I agree, it shouldn't be tied to looking at reducing these other costs. These are, these are, in, the way I viewed this was that this is, what we, what we received was proposed fees, these are, this is for one set of costs. This doesn't just include attorney's fees and everything, you know? This includes a lot of things that, that are getting incorporated into the whole process of, of when a building or when a developer comes in and is looking to do something in the city. This information only was kind of just as a, an after, well, now I won't say an afterthought, but more of a recommendation that, hey, we can, we can still cut down additional expenses that will help offset these increases, okay? So that even though we're, we're going to increase the fees, we can still cut our costs maybe even a little bit more. And, and that's why I would like to see us look at this, eliminate, do the text amendment, eliminate, you know, the, the court reporter and leave it to the discretion of, you know, the community development director for the attorney.
Alderman Shockey?
I have to disagree with a little bit of that, if I may. Pardon me. If somebody's going to be calling our attorney, I think that that billing should be, go, go to us, but then it should be passed on to that individual because they have their own attorneys. And if they want to save some money, they're going to be calling our attorneys and getting information. It's not fair to the other people again. You're, you're having one person who's taking advantage of the whole system. So I think if, if somebody's going to call our attorney without the permission of our zoning, of our, of Roger, for instance, that cost should be passed on to that individual in addition to any other...